Okay. Good evening, it's 6:00 PM on October 13th, 2021. And I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being televised live on local channel 18. And now, if we could all rise, say the... Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to announce that we will take questions from the general public at the end of each public hearing. And relative to that particular hearing, and if anybody in the audience has any questions related to something other than being heard tonight, we'll take that at the end of all of our hearings. Board member chairman, John Furbush, is absent tonight, and I'm, I'll be filling in for him. And the four regular board members will be sitting, as well as one alternate, and we will change each alternate based on the case that we have. I guess that's all I have to say. I guess we can open it up, and Sharon, if you'd like to read the first
Yep.
old business?
Continued hearings, 36 Summer Sea Road. Petitioner Joseph Anastasos requests a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 to raise or replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 105, parcel 26, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, 36 Summer Sea LLC, continued from September 8th, 2021, hearing at the request of the board.
I am going to be stepping down on this hearing, so I will ask Sharon and George to please sit in.
Who's the chairman? Okay. He doesn't have.
Good luck.
I presume you are the applicant, sir?
I am. Joe Anastas, nice to see you guys.
Nice to see you. Could you give the board an update, please?
Yeah, so today, I got my notice of intent on 36 Summer Sea. I'm very happy about that. We had a vegetation violation on the property, the previous owner, and we've hired Sabathia, Bob Gray, and Mike Karadossi, and we've put a plan together that, under the watchful eye of Drew. And we're presenting that tomorrow night. But that's a separate issue. The NOI has been submitted. And I think the question that you guys had was the coastal bank. And on this particular plan, it is now clearly identified in yellow. I don't know if I can hold that up or walk it around.
Everybody's got a small version of it, and it's kind of noted on there.
And what does the yellow say? It's eight years. What does it say? Oh, that's...
Oh.
This is the one you showed, but this is a new one.
Somebody highlighted that one.
Yeah, then that's a different one than the what we've got.
But somebody highlighted the wrong.
They highlighted the wrong.
Right, they highlighted this, that's what I'm saying.
I don't know who did that.
That's not going to fly, so.
So, okay. Continue, please.
So basically, you know, having, having received the NOI, I guess Conservation's all okay with...
Well, we have some letter. We do have a letter from Conservation, which we will read into the record after you, after you submit, if that's okay.
Okay, and as far as the, it doesn't really affect this meeting, but a septic plan has been submitted as well, so.
Well, why?
Do we have the lot coverage before? Was it on the original plan?
Yeah, it was on the original plan. It was...
I don't see it on this one. Do you know what it was? It's probably on here, I just...
I think...
Everybody, every engineer puts it in a different spot.
Yeah.
The lot is 16754.6. Somebody should say existing lot coverage of existing houses before in the post.
I know, I know it met the, it met the requirement. I just don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I don't see either.
We're going to need that.
Well, why don't we read the letters that we have correspondence into the record, then we'll go around.
Sure.
And...
I'll keep reading.
If that makes sense. Sharon, would you like to read Conservation's letter, please?
Yes.
Comments?
36 Summer Sea from Kate Cordett, dated 9/24/2021. Marian, the Conservation Commission continued the hearing for the tear-down rebuild project at 36 Summer Sea Road at, at the 9/9/21 September 9th meeting, the submission of an improved mitigation plan. This plan was submitted and approved at the 9/23 meeting. Kate, I have brought a health. 36 Summer Sea. This property is approved for three-bedroom. The proposed floor plans depict three-bedrooms. Septic plans have not been submitted, so septic or building permit approvals can be, can be issued. Oh, no septic or building approvals can be issued until septic design is approved. The owners received a variance to transfer the property without upgrading the septic. The dwelling is considered condemned until the tear-down and rebuild of the house occurs and the septic certification of compliance is issued. I have Conservation comments dated October 13th. This project has been approved by the Commission with the condition that the property owner provide a mitigation plan for the tree-cutting violations on the property prior to any commencement of work. This is a condition of the permit issued by the Conservation Commission.
I do have a copy of that mitigation plan, if you guys would like me to submit that.
Well, we may, why don't we, what I'd like to do is hear from, if I, if I could, from zoning enforcement officer and our account engineer, what their thoughts are, and then we're going to go around the board and get comments from the board, and then...
Sure.
Ask you more questions.
Absolutely.
All right, so I just want to read why you're here, Joe. It's a setback from water and wetlands, because I know that you went to Conservation, you came to this board, and you weren't ready. And on that, on that thing, 17.1 is not why he's here tonight? And it was on the record? So 17.1 is not why he's here?
That was what Trump said.
All right, so, all right, so 17, 174-33 is, any building or structure exclusive of fixed or floating piers, walls, docks, bridges, or boardwalks shall be set back at least 50 feet from any water or wetland as defined as national law 131, section 40. And on national law, section 40, the term coastal wetlands shall mean any bank, marsh, swamp, meadow, flat, or other lowland subject to title action or coastal form flourish, okay? So you, you need relief from this board. It's not from the Conservation. You also, you had to go to Conservation, but you need relief from this board, from that bylaw for, in order for me to issue a permit.
Okay.
So that's, that's why we're here tonight.
Okay.
But I get this new, I look at this, I just looked at this 10 minutes ago and just saw that there's a new character involved, and that's the retaining wall with the stairs. Now, that becomes annoying to me a little bit, but... So could, did the Conservation went to, with this map?
Yes.
And they approved that, but they didn't, did they, were they, did they see the retaining wall?
They, the new mitigation plan goes to them tomorrow night.
Okay, all right, that's, that's the trouble.
That's the thing I have with these retaining walls. I'm looking at this, it's over, it's over four feet. You get seven steps, so it's probably, it's 49, it's 49. Is this, is this a tapered wall?
We, we can, it's not etched in stone.
Right, right.
We can do, it's a, you know, it goes downhill, so we can...
The thing, the, the problems I, I'm having dealing with these is a lot of these are like eight, 10 feet tall.
Yeah, no, no.
And I know this isn't. I can tell it's not. It's probably around four to five feet. It, it, you get six steps of seven inches, so that is 63 inches. That's over five feet
Yeah.
to the top of the step or whatever, so it's not, it's not imposing, but the thing is, it's on the property line. Now, to build that, you have to be on the other side of the, of the property line. I don't know what it's made out of. Do you, have you even thought of it? It's concrete?
No, it's, it's probably just a stone wall, a concrete with a stone facing, and it doesn't have to be that tall. We can make it smaller. That's a first pass.
The issue is, I just want to say two things about this. When I, when I, for the board, what is exclusive is fixed piers. There's no mention of stairs. And a lot of these things, I get a lot of pushback on stairs. Some of these are like 13, 13 feet of vertical rise, and they have to build it on the side of a cliff, and they should be permitted and inspected, the only way they can be inspected. But that's, that's a side note. From this one, I'm looking at footnote 23, and the minimum setback from rear or side property lines shall be five feet for sheds or similar non-inhabitable structures not exceeding 120 square feet in floor area or 12 feet in height. And I'm wondering why we can't apply that to these retaining walls if they're over four feet. If they're under four feet, you don't even, they don't need to be acknowledged because you don't need a building permit or anything.
Yeah.
Again, this is something I didn't expect to see until, you know, I didn't see it until I sat down in this room. So that's where I stand on these things, only for two reasons. One is because of construction, you're going to have to, no matter how you build it, you're going to have to impede on the neighbor's property if you're putting it directly on the line. And the other thing is runoff after it's there. It's, it's going to change that. Is it, why is it necessary to, my question is, why is it necessary to, to run that all the way, all the way down past the driveway? Because it is going to change how the water runs off.
It's not necessary, but my intention would be to put some kind of a drywall there, a retaining capturing the water, if there is such a thing as a runoff. But if that property on the left slopes down significantly, and that's why we needed to put something on that side. Now, it could be, you know, it could be a smaller step with a living fence or something like that, but it drops off about eight feet to the left, so...
Yeah, but so, you know, I'm, like, my concern would be, like, again, later, the neighbor's saying, well, jeez, my water's filling up here that it never did before, before that wall's up there. So I'm wondering if, is a five-foot setback, is that a horrible thing?
No.
All right.
No, we're more than happy to accommodate that. That's not a problem. This is a, this was submitted to me today. This was a first pass from a site visit yesterday with all the players.
Yeah, it's just another curveball, so can we, yeah, I suppose we can not deal with the retaining wall?
Why don't we hear from, why don't we hear from the town engineer, any thoughts he may have, and then we'll go around the, the board and have comments from the board.
Just to, you know, expand on what Dave said. To build a retaining wall along the property line, you're going to have to put a footing under it, so you're digging on the neighbor's property. So you, you dig, you can't build that without digging onto neighbor's property. So I think there's going to have to be some sort of setback. As far as the height and all goes, that's more under Dave's purview. My only thing was height-related in this neighborhood. When we read the bylaw before, the only things really we have to deal with is the sweatland setback and the height of the building. So the height of the building can be 35 feet above the average existing grade
Yep.
of where your, not where the old building was.
I understand.
But it's where the new building is. In other words, you take your shot at your, you know, your two garage corners and your four building corners.
Yep.
And whatever that average is out to, which is tough to tell on the plan, but it looks like it averages out to about 28.
It is 28. It's 28.4.
Okay, that's what it looked like, just from what I'm scaling off on what I saw, with what I could figure. So 28.4, your foundation's 32.2, so it's 3.8 feet out of, three foot and nine inches or whatever out of the ground. So your building height can only be 31 feet from the top of your foundation. And the building plans that we were shown, it just showed a 35 max, but it didn't, it showed a, like a flush building with a foot reveal when it's really going downhill.
Yeah, it's a walkout. It was 30, 32 was the, was the top.
If you could provide plans that, and again, with...
Average grade.
Establish, establish the average grade.
It would have to establish from your 28 to whatever you had.
Mm-hmm.
It can be 35 feet plus 28.2.
Yep.
It would, it would seem to me, correct me if I'm wrong, that there are a list of things that we need to fill in the holes here, such as, you know, we don't know what plan Conservation has approved at this point in time. Did it include a wall? Didn't include a wall. We don't know height, the maximum height of the bridge of this house compared to this retaining wall scenario.
Well, the, the, the plan was submitted.
So I have a question. So the plan that was submitted to Conservation and ultimately approved by Conservation, you have an order of conditions and/or a scientific, a, a, a negative finding in reference to needing to go to Conservation.
Right, which was a separate issue.
Right, well, yes. So you have an order of conditions from Conservation right now.
Correct.
And in that, that plan that was submitted to them included this retaining wall.
I've, I've sent this to Drew.
No, but I'm asking a question. The plan that they made reference to in your order of conditions, because Conservation generally says we are, we are making, giving you an order of conditions, and, and they make reference to a plan.
Mm-hmm.
And that plan that they make reference to shows that wall, that retaining wall.
To be honest with you, I'm, I'm not 100% sure. I have Conservation tomorrow night. I've submitted this plan. Today, I got a call and was told I had the NOI.
This is a 100-foot buffer, goes right to the wall.
Yeah, I, we can't, we can't, this, this plan's kind of not relevant if it hasn't been approved by Conservation. We can't vote on...
Well, we were here today to vote on the, I was told that I was supposed to come back here today because there was a question about the distance from the coastal bank.
Right.
Okay. I can eliminate this retaining wall 100%. It doesn't matter to me.
We understand that, but we've also been told, been advised by various people within this community to make sure that the plans that we're acting on are the plans that we're going to file. So the plan that we're acting on tonight is the plan that shows a retaining wall. Okay, and this is the file. This would go into the file.
Right.
Is that correct?
Well, that's the landscape plan.
Okay, so...
Yeah, it's...
This is the site plan.
Yeah, it's the site.
But if we approve this, there's no wall. You can't build a wall at all.
What?
Unless he comes back for...
Then he'd have to come back again.
So is it, is it because it's on the, on the line?
It is because, well, first of all, the zoning enforcement officer has spoken about his opinion in reference to that.
Yep.
And number two is, is if it's not, if it, you're asking for relief from a setback from a wetlands. Now, what is included in that relief would be right now, on this plan, this plan, forget about landscape plan, does not show a wall.
Mm-hmm.
This is going to go on the folder. Doesn't show a wall.
Okay.
We're going to give you, let's say we gave you that relief.
Yep.
You can't build a wall.
Fine.
Okay?
Good, that's fine. I mean, if, we, we can just withdraw that plan.
It's fine. Again, this was given to me today. It was something that more...
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's just...
No, no, I understand. This was more to, to address the mitigation.
So then, so then we need to move to the next step, and that is lot coverage.
20%.
So we need...
Yeah, we have nothing to say.
But we, we need something in our plan that says what that percentage is.
It's going to get recorded. Do we have it before? Do we have what the existing house was?
It should say existing house is X.
Yeah.
And new house to be built is Y.
She, I submitted that.
Okay.
All right, good. That's good.
Perfect.
I just didn't bring it with me. Thank you, Marian.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
If I might. And plus, this is, this is in New Seabray, special permit area.
Oh, what is it?
Oh, is this a special permit?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Oh. Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Something we should have stopped.
Different situation. So...
And just for, just for reference, I did already go to the ARC on the setback, and they had asked me to move it over two feet, which I did on that plan that you have there, Scott. Yep.
Yeah, the existing building's 10%. So he can go up to 20. Well, no, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Because the max special permit, you can go as big as you want.
So do you concur with that, Dave?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with the New Seabray thing, and, and we can deal with the retaining wall at a different time.
Yep.
Does A, well, do we know if ARC approved the plan yet?
They gave me a pre-approval based on a landscape plan.
I just make it sure that, you know, they're okay with the size of the house.
Yeah, I'll be in there tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock.
I just make it sure they're okay with the size of the house.
Yep.
Nothing really matters. It just seems to be, we don't have anything with a special permit. So he could build 75% lot coverage.
Exactly.
So this, so this next question I have then is, what is the relief, if any, that you're seeking from this 50-foot setback from the, from the resource area? What's the, what's the dimension? What are you seeking?
I'm confused.
So our bylaw states that you, that you cannot build, construct whatever within 50 feet of the resource area.
Right.
Right? Unless you seek relief from this board.
Yep. I'm keeping the house in the same footprint.
We need a measurement.
You actually moved it slightly away from the wetland.
It's either, there's two measurements on it. I don't know which is the correct one.
So does that mean, so if he's moving it further away, it's less, it's less non...
I got it right here. The, the existing house, from, check me if I'm wrong, was 8.2 from the wetland. The new proposed house is going to be 12.5 from the wetland.
Yeah.
So whatever the math is.
So then I have a question of David. Why is he here?
He still needs relief. He's under...
No, because...
It's not worse.
Pre-existing non-conforming use.
I don't know.
I can't get to that.
So if he is eight feet existing home from the wetland today, and he's going to raise and replace, that's like, if he's two foot from a, from a side yard, he can build, he can build three feet from that side yard and not ask for relief from this board. Why would he have to ask for relief from wetlands when in fact he is further away from the wetland?
You're making it better.
Exactly.
And because of special permit, he doesn't need to, we don't have to approve or raise and replace it to...
Well, I...
Because of the setback, all that doesn't matter?
Maybe I'm wrong, and I'm, you know...
It's...
Correct. Now he's showing it, and he's comparing old house at eight feet plus or minus.
So he's improving?
He's improved on the...
I'm just saying, do we need to even vote on it? Is it...
And that's really up to David. I mean, if, if you want us to, David certainly, you know, we will, I guess, do so, but I, if in fact it is eight plus feet existing, and he's going to go to 12 feet, he is making it less non-conforming.
Yeah, we didn't, when it first got submitted, we didn't know what it was.
We didn't have the numbers.
But now we have the numbers. It seems like he's less non-conforming.
And David's saying he has to come to us.
And I mean, the only two things from what I read in the bylaw, now the retaining wall, that's a totally different angle, but the only two things that I read he'd have to be here for is the 50-foot setback, which now that he's shown it, he's okay, and the building height. But his house plans just showed a max 35 from the average ground, so he, basically, when you come for a building permit, you'd have to have a house
Yeah.
that, you'd have to have accurate plans that show.
I do have the plans. I just didn't...
And you'd have to bring in today.
They're not going to give a building permit unless it's correct anyway.
But I want to...
Do we condition it on that?
Well, I, I don't, I'm not, I want to make sure that David's concurring with this because I don't want to tell the applicant he doesn't need our relief when in fact, if David doesn't agree with that. I mean, I think, it seems to me, relief from setback from wetlands is no different than side yard, front yard, lot coverage, or anything else. If in fact he was 25-foot existing lot coverage, and he took in half of the house down to 12%.
Well, no, I, because I think even Chris said that it's because of wetlands. It doesn't matter where he is because of wetlands. If it's in the New Se, in the special permit zone or anything.
I, I would concur with you there.
It's that, building height and, and wetlands, so...
But what I'm saying is less, he's brought down that non-conformity.
Yeah, but he's still non, he's still...
All right. Well, if you want us to, we will move forward. That's fine.
Yeah, I, yeah, you need relief from it. That's why you're...
So I guess my question is, is how much of the, so at this point in time, what did you just say that dimension was?
Uh, well, 12, maybe a bigger one, 12?
You can actually see the...
Is that a five or an eight? I can't read that.
See, we can't read the plan very well, and it's very important.
There's a line going through the five, whatever. 12, it could be a six, it could be a zero. I can't tell.
So your house, your new house, if this vote, vote, votes to approve it, is a distance from that resource area that is shown in your plan. It needs to be 50 feet. If it's 40, you're seeking 10 feet relief. If it's 30, you're seeking 20 feet relief. So you need to tell us, read your plan, I guess, what relief you're looking for.
I can't, I can't read that number. It's 12.7. We just have to do the math, the difference between 50 feet. It's 12.7, but the line goes right through.
I believe it's 12.5.
So you're seeking about 38 feet of relief.
12.5. It, it, it looks like 12.5 to me.
So that would be 37.5, so I'm a firm believer we could go better at 38 feet, right?
Yeah.
But that's up to the app.
I guess we can go with 12.
You need a half foot, but...
Here you go, guys. We can read this. Thank you.
It's the same, yeah, it's the same thing.
It's the same thing. The line goes right through the point, this engineer is... See that number right there?
Yep.
It says 12. something.
Yep.
Nobody can read that. It's impossible to read. It's a black line going through.
So as the applicant, if you could tell us what that is, subtract it from 50 feet, and you can then tell us what you want for relief, we don't want to tell you what you want relief.
I guess it's 37 feet.
38, go.
About 38.
Sharon, you're asking for relief of 38 feet from the bylaw in reference to the 50-foot setback from a resource area.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I see that there is a Board of Health condition here. I'm a little concerned about that, but I'd like to hear from the board members in reference to that. I know we've conditioned other permits on that, but I leave that up to input from the rest of the board. I guess he has gone in front of Conservation. Conservation's all set at this point in time, so we have relief at 38 feet. I, I would presume that the settlement, settling of the, and again, this part of this, I would recommend that our, anyone who makes a motion make certain that it stated that there is no retaining wall in this application. And... Well, why don't we go around? So, Sally, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm just a little bit concerned about the septic in terms of what we do now as opposed to what might happen in the future. I, does it come back to us after it goes to Board of Health?
If there's a change to this plan, it would have to come back to us. That, that borders on, I think, Aaron stating to us that we shouldn't be, we should not be approving developments or plans without seeing finished plans. Probably, it could go either way, but that's why I'm...
I've got a condition. I'm, well...
Conditioned.
I'm going to make a condition that the Board of Health has to approve a new septic design.
And any changes to the plan due to that design would have to come back to us?
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, is that, I mean, I'm not trying to talk you into it. I'm just trying to hear what you have to say.
So I, I actually didn't have to even upgrade the septic. I mean, I, I could have stayed with the original septic. I foreglowed that to put in a brand-new septic system.
Well, it doesn't, that's not what...
What's Board of Health saying?
You find it.
Board of Health didn't say that. Board of Health is saying...
Mr. The owner received a variance to transfer the property without upgrading the septic.
Yeah. So if, if, I'll, I'll read it back in. So it says, Board of Health comments, this property is approved for three bedrooms. The proposed floor plans depict three bedrooms. Septic plans have not been submitted, so no septic or building permit approvals can be issued until a septic design is approved. So the Board of Health is of the opinion that you have to upgrade the system because it says, septic plans have not been submitted, so no septic or building permit approvals can be issued until a septic plan is approved.
I've, I've, I'm doing a new septic system.
If I could clear that up. What, what happened was when this was conveyed, typically when you convey, you inspect an upgrade.
Title 5, yeah.
Right.
Glenn let it slide on the upgrade just for the conveyance, pointing out that it was a condemned building, and when it does get upgraded, it needed a new septic.
Ah.
So that's where the, where the thought of, I don't have to...
Different than what you're saying, sir. I believe you're going to have to upgrade that system
I'm putting it in... I, I'm putting in a new septic, yeah, I'm putting in a new septic.
Yeah, but Glenn thinks it's in failure.
Yeah.
So that means you have to seek their approval and gain their approval before you can see that gentleman.
Right. So the way that it went was, we did the test. Glenn said with some upgrades, I could keep that system. And I said, we decided that the best course of action was to condemn the house, 'cause I said I was gonna put in a brand-new system. So, and move it up where it belongs in the front. So, um, that's kinda what happened. So I've just recently submitted the septic plan to Glenn.
So, yeah, either way, they gotta be approved.
I just don't, we just don't usually vote before Glenn has approved a septic design. I don't know if we can. And we usually don't vote until conservation is out of there.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned over voting tonight.
That's going through the built permit process anyway, so.
I mean, it's true. I mean, it's not gonna get approved if conservation doesn't sign off, and border health doesn't sign off anyway.
Correct.
We can't condition on those things, 'cause it's not gonna get any farther than if it fails.
Good point.
I mean, if you condition it, then if anything changes, it has to come back to us.
Okay. I'm only one member, so you know what?
I think we can.
If you choose to make a motion, we have to.
I mean, I'm just one guy. If you guys think.
I agree with that.
I mean, uh, chairman only has one vote. Just the way it works. I'm just bringing up issues. So just, just to, just to go through this again, no wall, um, the plan is depicted, really, we're not worried about lot coverage because of the special permit. Um, the, the height of the building, you're gonna deal with that.
Yep.
The board of health, you, certainly you're not gonna issue a building until that's dealt with. Um, and so, um, why don't we go around the board? Um, George, what are your thoughts?
As long as we make these, uh, conditions in the, uh, in the motion, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'll agree with that.
So why, why don't we?
I have to add the, uh.
There's a lot of conditions. Do you wanna go through each one of them, and that way you can?
Thank you.
Take it down, take it down.
There, I have to go through you anyway, so.
Exactly, well.
Well, our, uh, our, our gentleman who may be making the motion is making some notes, so we're just gonna chill out a little bit and let him do so.
Well, that kinda goes in with the retaining wall, too.
So you understand that the motion probably would say something for the effect that this doesn't automatically be the ability to install a case.
That's fine. That's fine. Just, just out of curiosity, if that was a, um, um, timber wall, would that be a, a different situation?
No, same thing. It's the same thing. I mean, no matter how you build it.
Yeah, I just gotta figure out how to deal with the slope.
Even if you do, makes me, if, if it's.
Could exclude that landscape plan from the application.
Well, yeah, you might.
Maybe you can give me some, I'd come to the site.
Yeah, I mean, if you keep it under four feet, I don't have an issue with it at all. You know what I mean?
Can we say that?
But the four feet, I'd rather just leave it out right now.
Okay, just come back to you.
You know what I mean? Because it's gonna open another can of worms.
I mean, they tell.
But, um.
Why don't we make reference right to this landscape plan, which is, the landscape plan is L one, dot zero.
I'm just gonna say no landscape.
Yeah.
No landscape plan is record. So why don't, um. Why don't we have Scott read the conditions? So that way we all, 'cause there's so many unbelieve conditions.
Can I read them first before I make the motion?
Surely can.
All right.
Yeah.
The normal ones, that the board, we're gonna be requesting a setback, we'll be requesting a setback for a motion for thirty-eight feet from wetlands.
Okay.
All right.
Um, border health approves a new septic design. Any changes to that will require the applicant to come back to the board.
Okay.
Okay.
Average grades, average grade needs to be noted, and the height of the building noted on a plan. I mean, I don't have to mention any more than that. Uh, no landscape plan or retaining wall design is approved at this time. Conservation must approve the plan without retaining walls. If any retaining walls are added, would they have to come back? But no, I guess we.
Yes, yes. Or any changes to the plan that's a change.
Well, I'm, I'm not referencing.
Oh, this plan, the border health plan.
Oh, okay.
We gotta reference that, some plans, so we're gonna have to make reference to this plan right here. This will be the plan of record, right? You're not gonna, this plan right here doesn't exist. It's, it's, you can throw it out.
Which one do we?
This plan is a plan of record right here, which is that blue, you know, that.
And that's, and that's on here.
You probably, we wanna make.
Sweetster Engineering.
Is that?
Yeah. August twelfth.
See, August.
August twelfth, two thousand.
August twelfth, two thousand and one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
And it's, yeah, exactly. It does not make reference to the plan. Okay, perfect. So as long as you get rid of this plan, we're not gonna make reference.
I'm not even gonna reference it, 'cause it's not relevant.
All right.
Okay.
I think we got it. I think you got it. So would someone like to make a motion in reference to this application?
I, I would like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approved thirty-six Summer C Road, petition to Joseph Anastas, request a special permit under section one seventy-four dash seventeen point one and one seventy, section one seventy-four dash thirty-three, to raise and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family structure on a property located in I three zoning district, map one oh five, parcel twenty-six, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record. I'm confused. I thought we were approving the wetback.
Yeah, so the one seventy-four seventeen one has been stricken. We don't, we're not doing that anymore under that. So you don't, you don't wanna amend or do that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna omit the special permit under one seventy-four.
We're only under one seventy-four thirty-three.
So only one seventy-four dash thirty-three, uh.
I was gonna correct you, but I figured I'd wait till the end.
Okay, then I three zoning district, map one oh five, parcel twenty-six, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record, thirty-six Summer C LLC, with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under national law forty-eight, section nine. Proposed septic plan prepared by Sweetster Engineering, date August twelfth, twenty twenty-one, scale one inch equals twenty feet, job eight five five three dash zero zero, client Anastas, signed by Robin Wilcox, number three one three four one, professional land surveyor. The board issues a setback under, doesn't say here, but from wetland coastal bank, under seven, under section one seventy-four dash thirty-three, in the amount of thirty-eight feet. Condition an all-town department comments ready to record. The border health, in a, condition that the border health approves a new septic design, any changes to that plan will be requ, will be required to come back to this board. Also, condition that the average grade must be noted on a plan showing the, in showing the height, the maximum height of the building. No retaining walls are, no landscape plan or retaining walls are approved at this time. And conservation must approve the plans submitted without retaining walls. If any retaining walls will be required, if any retaining walls are approved by conservation, applicant will be required to come back to this board for approval.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Seems unanimous.
Thank you. Quick question. Will these boards notify you guys directly?
Uh, will they notify us?
Will the border health notify you directly on the approval of the septic? Or do I, do I have to come back and do that?
It'll be on the, it'll be on the panel.
And, and I, and I need to say, I made a severe mistake, and that is, anyone in the audience, if you wanna give me any comments? Oh, my God.
Who's next?
That's it? Not, not in this application? Thank God.
Thank, thank you, guys. Sorry for any, uh, miss, uh, you know, whatever.
We were so, we were so tense on the motion that I didn't listen to anyone in the audience. All right. It certainly was. All right, so it was me. And that would be Scott, and that would be, so, um, I see, so Charlie.
Okay.
That happened today.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
All right, so the, so another thing is, is, um, yes, it's gonna be Sharon, or is it gonna be, uh, let's see. Is it all right with you if I just say Sharon and you do not have to sign? Is that okay?
He's a woman. He's a.
So then I have to include him, and Sharon, you're, so yeah, you're.
He's not associate. You're a regular.
Yeah, so who's the associate out of this?
Sharon's associate.
Yeah.
Sharon's a candidate.
Okay, so.
Your, your call.
Yeah, my fault. So, one, two. So whoever, so one, two, three, so whoever's on this, either George or Charlie.
Okay.
George, go.
Okay. So. So. I blew that one.
No, you did okay.
Can I say?
We'll talk about it, but later.
I won't sleep tonight. So, you want more plans? We went from needing to not needing to maybe needing a, yeah.
That's right. Well, it's, it's above it, isn't it?
You need to sign all those two, right?
There's a line in Bill, there's a line.
Oh, so on that.
No, he changed, he changed. Because it was a voted on. He just assumed. I don't know what he assumed. He just assumed.
What?
Nothing. We were just a little confused, 'cause the box was.
Yeah. I did that. I messed up again.
Yeah, sure.
All right, we've got one, two, three, four. Don't we need a fifth signature?
So Sharon.
I'm, I'm on the other.
Yeah.
I thought he said Sharon wasn't voting.
No, she's, she's full. She's full.
Oh, you're, you're not an associate either.
I'm not full-time, yeah.
Yeah, she's not an associate.
Yeah. Mary Ann says things might happen.
It's.
I would, I would innocent.
I have a spy, and John is not here.
Okay.
You can say somebody's gotta put a deed or something in for him, you know, sign it, that would be true.
Do you want to have a new associate coming?
Okay. We ready to go?
We're ready.
Sharon, could you read the second continued hearing, please?
Fourteen Pine Avenue. Petitioner Chris Childs, Patriot Builders, requests a special permit under one seventy-four dash seventeen point one of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming residential structure, existing foundation to remain. On the property located in I three zoning district, map one twenty-three, parcel forty, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record, Christopher M. De Santis and Laurie A. Stucci, continued from September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, hearing at the request of the applicant.
I believe we have a request for a continuance here. Some more?
Yep. Fourteen, I have it. Uh, fourteen Pine Ave., um, it's from Chris Childs, dated October fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Dear Ms. Romero, I'm representing Christopher De Santis and Laurie Stucci of fourteen Pine Ave., Mashpee, Mass., on their application for special permit, which is on the October thirteenth Z B A hearing agenda. I respectfully request a continuance to October twenty-seventh hearing to allow more time to complete the board of health approval process and to update proposed plans. Please let me know if you need any additional information. Thank you. Chris Childs, President of Patriot Builders, Inc.
Ron, would you like to make a motion?
Um, well, do we have room on the October twenty-seventh meeting?
I assume we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I presume. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request of, um, Chris Childs in reference to nineteen Pine Ave.
Fourteen.
Is it nine?
Fourteen.
Fourteen Pine Ave., fourteen Pine Ave., Mashpee, Mass., uh, his request for an extension from October thirteenth, which is tonight, to October twenty-seventh.
Go on to second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Um, by the way, George was sitting on that one, too. In case you didn't know George.
At least I wasn't the only one that did it.
Charlie, you'll be sitting in on the next one, if you would. Sharon, could you read the first new here?
Forty-nine Fels Pond Road. Owners Richard J. and Janet E. Wise-Hoss request a written finding under one seventy-four dash seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition extension of a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling on property located in an I three zoning district, map one sixteen, parcel nine, Mashpee, Mass.
Go right ahead. Introduce yourself, then.
I'm Richard Wise-Hoss, the owner of the property.
Kevin Strick, builder.
What would you like to tell us?
Uh, we've owned the property for twenty-odd years. Uh, we'd like to add on to it, move down here full-time. It's a currently non-conforming, and we obviously need permission to do it. In the plans that we submitted, there is an error, and it was a misunderstanding with the architect, uh, about a fourth bedroom. That's never intended to be a fourth bedroom. It's a seventy-two square foot room. We were gonna widen it, uh, and make it an office, widen the opening, I mean.
Do you have that plan?
All we have is, I don't have any floor plans. All we have is elevator.
I don't have any floor plans either that I'm aware of.
They went to the border health. He's out with it.
Why don't we, uh, read in the board health before we proceed with any further. Sharon, could you read that in?
Yep, border health. Border health, forty-nine Fels Pond Road. The proposed floor plans depict four primary bedrooms. The septic permitted as, for the border health is three bedrooms. The property is located in zo, a zone two to a public water supply well, so it is restricted to three bedrooms. The additions renovations appear to be an entire gut of the dwelling, therefore, an asbestos inspection and rodent inspection are required to be performed prior to the issuance of a building permit. The change in footprint of the foundation requires a septic inspection to be performed. The inspection report shall be uploaded into the border health and building department online permitting database prior to the issuance of a building permit.
How about conservation? What do they say here?
Conservation. Um, property is outside of wetlands jurisdiction.
I don't feel real comfortable without a fourth one.
I got one up here.
I think, and Scott's got some.
Oh, you've got them all?
Yeah, but do we have them in, is there a second floor? Do, do we have them on paper?
I have copies here.
Something to stamp.
If anybody needs them.
This one's stamped.
I submitted three copies.
So the one up at the top is the one that's not gonna be as.
Yeah, that very small one up there.
What's that wall gonna be removed?
No, we're gonna make the opening wider.
Just the door to come off and be a six-foot opening.
Since COVID, I've been working at home more than, than I ever have, and if we move down here, I will be working two or three days a week.
You opened door, but you hadn't shown.
Oh, yeah.
Sharon, are you controlling this? Can I see the first floor plan?
Okay, yep.
Is this property covered by the New Seaberry blanket special permit?
No, it's not.
No.
So what's the front yard setback here?
It's currently thirty-five feet, and the addition would make it twenty-nine, just on the left corner.
What's required, what's the zoning?
Forty.
So you need relief with that.
No, it's a written finding. Yeah, it needs a written finding.
They were already in violation, so they're extending a pre-existing non-conformity.
I thought you said, didn't you say the setback was thirty-five? What, what'd you say?
It was thirty-five. It's going to twenty-nine. Getting closer.
And they require forty.
Oh. I thought you said they require thirty-five. Okay, okay. So you can expand on that for me. I get it.
Correct.
I thought it was a thirty-five foot setback, and you already are in compliance with it.
No.
Gotcha.
Okay. I'm good with that floor. I just wanted to see what.
Yep.
Any rooms that could have been a bedroom.
They're not introducing a new non-conformity. It's just extending a previously existed.
Gotcha. I always get amazed when people build to a setback at fifteen feet. The setback's fifteen feet. They go to fifteen feet. David, if you have any problems with that? I mean.
No, I mean, it, it, that's, that's what they're entitled to. That's what they're entitled to, so.
Just go right there. So this, it's a three-bedroom house, so.
Yep.
First floor has a master. It was up there. First floor has a master. Boom. This is all open space. Second floor, bedroom two, bedroom three. They're calling this a bedroom. So as long as they make that a six-foot opening, that's not a bedroom.
So we can condition it on that?
Yep. That bedroom number one be converted to a, the door be removed in, in.
And don't you have to do away with that closet?
Nope. We just have that six-foot opening.[1784.45]
Right.
You can have a bathroom, a closet, whatever you want, just could have a six-foot opening.
I assume we need a new.
Minimum six-foot.
A new plan. There was one in the basement, two, the other basement.
I don't have a basement plan.
No, because that's what the Board of Health.
New plan, right, how you gonna put a new plan?
Five rooms.
Do you have a basement plan?
There's no basement plan yet.
Did he say basement?
You have a primary bedroom in the basement under the Board of Health comments?
Oh, well, that can't happen.
Nothing about the basement, is it?
I don't have a basement.
Did he say basement? Is the basement finished now?
It is. But the rooms down there, the, the door openings are just about six feet, I thought it had to be six and a half feet to be considered a bedroom. And it was seventy square feet for the whole.
Is there a window?
Uh, one has a window and no closet.
If it has an egress window, it's not legally a bedroom, that's a Board of Health thing, but I, my opinion is, it doesn't have an egress window, it's not a bedroom, but that's just one person's opinion. And if it's under a certain square footage, and you don't have enough, uh, square footage or square inches of glass.
My only concern is, is that we're making Board of Health decisions, you know what I mean?
I know, but he's, Board of Health made a comment about that basement bathroom, bedroom, he wants a, a six-foot opening, but that's fine, we can condition that. There's also one.
Well, I, I think, well, if I can say something, I think that, um, the Board of Health issues can be addressed during the permit process, with no, with no problem at all.
But wouldn't they require changes to the plans that are in front of us? Whether it be a six-foot opening?
I don't, I don't see, well, uh, with the floor plans?
Yes.
They're existing, I mean.
It does say addition renovation appears to, appears to be an entire gut of the dwelling. Is that the plan, the totally gut door, because if they're gonna gut the basement, then that is gone.
Not completely, but, not completely, but.
All right, well.
My understanding was that in order for it to be a bedroom, the, the door height has to be six and a half feet.
You know that one, you ever heard that, Dave?
Never heard that one.
Well, that's what the architect told me, I didn't know.
Now, Glenn specifies as a, a six-foot opening.
Needs a six-foot opening without a closet.
Case opening, or, six-foot opening would, to, to, to have no privacy, it prevents privacy. But again, I think that, I think all those issues can be done during the permit process, and I think that, um, we could move on with a, with, you know, a written finding. Well, the problem I've got is, we're gonna, we've got no sta- no plan to stamp, to file with this, with this, uh, approval, if, if we were so inclined to approve it.
Well, he just gave us a plan, but it has to be submitted ahead of time.
That's not correct.
We did submit a stamp survey.
See, I, my, well, I tend to concur with Billy in that, we had a meeting with our planning board agent, and he mentioned to us, and men- and mentioned my name, actually, because I make most of my motions, and I was making conditional motions on plans to be filed, and that wasn't the way to do it.
That was a town plan.
Yes, exactly, town planning agent, yes, town planner, and I get it.
Charlie, am I missing something? I don't see where it says, I, I see, proposed floor plan depicts four primary bedrooms.
Okay, the one I asked, uh, the floor plans depict five rooms that meet the Board of Health bedroom definition under the Board of Health comments.
You're reading fourteen, you're reading fourteen pine.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
This is forty-nine.
I'm sorry.
I'm reading it, I'm reading it, reading it, and going, I don't see anything about a basement bedroom.
I'm one step behind everybody here.
Not a problem. So Board of Health's concerned with that bedroom up here.
Right, so that.
The basement is gonna be a whole nother issue when you go to approve, it, that's not even depicted here, so I don't know how we vote on that.
So I, and, and I, I'd like to move it forward, too, because, you know, but I'm just concerned that we had someone in front of us that said, what, we shouldn't be approving applications unless the plans are a hundred percent.
I agree.
And that being said, I don't know how to do that, because minimumly, if, if the Board of Health is saying that, that's gonna be a six-foot opening, it's not.
We conditioned things in the past.
Yeah, but we've caught heck for, now, I did, because I'm the one who made the motions.
Correct.
Well, that's why I like when you make the motions.
Yeah, I know, you love it, yeah, I got big shoulders, but not that big.
What's being considered the fourth bedroom?
So it, it was my intent.
Up there, number one.
Let me, let me talk. Bill. Let me, let me speak.
There's only three up there.
If I might make.
The master, the first.
Oh, I see, all right.
I mean, I don't.
But that has an opening. No, it doesn't, okay.
So I think it's a pretty easy fix, but.
If I might, if I might make a suggestion.
Sure.
They're here for relief, really for the setback.
Correct.
So that can be granted without a blessing on the building's plan, and then they're out of the way with that, and as far as the building, it's gonna go to Dave, and it's gonna have to either have a six-foot opening or remove that wall.
Condition on that bedroom being a six-foot opening per Board of Health.
Yeah.
I agree, I think it can be.
So we're just, we're just going to vote on the.
But you could still vote on the setback.
So we don't vote on any floor plan?
No floor plan, we don't.
We're approving your house plan. Isn't that gonna be on the motion, the house plan?
How do I make the, and by the way, it's gonna be read into the minutes, it's gonna be.
Yeah, the house plan can't be in the motion if it is.
It is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Eliminate the house, so how does? Yeah, this isn't a raise and replace, we're looking at it like a raise and replace where you're approving a new house. This is an addition, so that all falls on the Board of Health.
So you can't, you.
It's just a relief.
Condition on all town department comments read into the record.
And that's been read into the record.
I mean, I don't know.
I got big shoulders, I don't mind making a motion if I have to, I'm just saying to you that.
As one member, I don't see why we can't condition it that that fourth bedroom, bedroom number one, be omitted and has a six-foot case opening.
Let's do it that way.
I don't see why that would come back and bite us in the butt.
That's what you guys wanna do anyway, right? Yes.
Yeah, that's what I kind of.
It's fine.
And you'll see that in the final drawings when I have them.
And when you get that final drawing, we should stamp it and put it in the file, right?
That's, that's you, that's you, Dave, the basement stuff. That's you, Glenn, for the basement, I don't, I don't see it, I don't know anything about it.
Yep.
So why don't we just, so why wouldn't the motion just say, this house cannot be any more, cannot contain any more bedrooms under the Board of Health regulations than three? And he can take any bedroom out he wants, under their regulations.
Yeah, but you're approving this plan, so don't you have to make, well, yeah, he could do it if he wants, he could eliminate any bedroom.
Why, we're telling them what to do, and I don't think that's right.
That's true.
What we wanna do is.
You could actually, you could actually put a door between bedrooms two and three, and you'd be covered there.
I'm saying the mo- I, I, I'll make, I'll make the motion, anyway you guys want.
No, I think you're right, because it conditions it to that bedroom has to be omitted, you don't have to omit that bedroom.
One of mine is, is there's a Board of Health comment that were read in the record that this has, it's a three-bedroom hu- bed, septic system, and it has to be a three-bedroom house, and you need to get, go back to Board of Health and omit one of these bedrooms, by their rules and regulations. Whichever one, you can take the first one or the master, take that one out, right, who cares?
Condition on them going back to the Board of Health and showing them revised, revised floor plans.
Three bedrooms, three bedrooms floor plan.
And then file those floor plans with the building's department.
There you go. Do you want this plan to be stamped in, can you do that? You can't do that because it wasn't submitted, so what do we do with that?
See, that's, that's why Evan was saying what he's saying, because we then.
Well, we're taking that out, we're taking the house plans out, and that's not even relevant.
Yeah, but we. Then what plan am I referring to, well?
Just the site plan, just the site plan, because we're only conditioning, we're only voting on the setback.
On the setback.
That's all we're voting on.
So I'm taking the house plans out, I'm doing a site plan.
Yep.
And I'm gonna state something to the effect that the applicant needs to meet and needs to obtain an approval from the Board of Health that under their rules and regulations clearly depicts their floor plan depicts three bedrooms.
Correct, and then file the, that plan with the building's department to be stamped by zoning and sign.
Okay. Groovy.
A little muddy, man.
A little muddy. Come on, get the muddy ones.
Off the draw.
So on the issue of the setback, which is why we're here.
Correct.
Now, let's continue with that.
You're looking for how many feet?
Approximately six at an angle, if you, if you.
Uh, we'd like to have it exactly.
No, he's not looking for relief on the setback, you're looking for, for.
No, you're not looking for any relief, you're looking for.
Looking for a written finding, there's no relief whatsoever.
Written finding, that, that what you're proposing is not more detrimental than what previously existed.
Yes.
We're not even, yeah, so we're not.
I need numbers.
You've got the numbers that are on this plan, that's why, when I brought up the fact, here's the only thing I'd like to say, if I may, Mr. Chairman, for a second.
Sure.
When you depict on a plan fifteen foot to side yard, the side yard setback, I believe in this zone, is fifteen feet.
It is.
So if you're, I, and I can't speak for our zoning enforcement officer, but if your frame or frames it, and all of a sudden, the, the rake return sticks out a three inches like they normally do, and all of a sudden, he looks up and says, oh my God, you're no longer fifteen feet.
We've always gone by foundation.
Well, really? Foundation.
Because you got your plywood and your, and your trim.
Right, I, most towns I'm in, they do, they go foundation, they do kick me on it.
We've always gone foundation.
My point is this, if the foundation, if the, if the form stretch a quarter of an inch, you, you got a problem, that's all I'm saying.
Well, they gotta pin the hole, I mean, the right way to do it is to pin the hole and have the.
I just get frustrated when people come in and show a plan, I agree with David just said, they have a right to go to fifteen feet, not fourteen foot nine-nine-nine-nine-nine.
If they put the foundation in the wrong spot by an inch.
Am I right, David?
Well, no, hear me out.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be de minimis, but yeah.
Hear me out, if they put the foundation in the wrong spot by an inch, two inches, whatever, um, they're gonna get a certified foundation plan that says that, it's gonna go back to Dave, and Dave's gonna say, you're under fifteen feet, now you're in violation, now you're gonna have to come back, and we're gonna have to deal with it.
I'm totally fine with it.
If it was a foot off, it'd be a big problem.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's a quarter of an inch, it's de minimis.
And I don't know if a quarter of an inch of engineer's gonna not stamp it.
They're not even gonna put that in.
No, they're gonna stamp it.
So they, they go by tenths of an inch.
I don't have any, I don't know any engineers.
All right, can, can you put up on the screen the site plan?
Yes, I can.
Sharon?
Yep.
Yep.
Well, that's not it.
Yeah, that's it.
That's the site.
That's the only one we have.
That's the one we're voting on.
Thirty-five point one-four.
Okay, there we are. So you see at the bottom, we're at thirty-five point one-four.
Yeah.
With the addition, it's gonna be twenty-nine two-six, that's the only encroachment on the setback.
You're already encroaching the setback.
We're already encroaching.
At thirty-five one-four, you're supposed to be forty.
He's bringing up the fifteen foot, I don't think anybody else has a problem with the fifteen foot.
I don't either.
I see that they put it right on the corner, I, I get that.
It's right to the point. I mean, I don't know how you normally do it, but I have the, the hull stake, I mean, pinned, and I have the footing pinned, when I, any foundations, especially Seabury.
We're, we're appro- we're approving fifteen feet, period.
So you're, exactly, so.
This site, this site plan.
I don't, I don't think it's relevant, I don't think we're done, I think we're done.
I just brought that up because it's, it's like David, in reference to retaining walls, I get concerned when people do that. In some communities that I work in, if it says fifteen feet and you're fourteen, nine-nine-nine-nine-nine-nine-nine, you lose, take the wall down.
Yeah, I could see if they came with a plan with a cantilever, we, they stopped doing that, you can't have a cantilever.
I, I don't need to go over any more, fine, but the bottom line is, you don't need any relief, that I concern. Am I correct in that, David?
They need a written finding, they need a finding whether it's detrimental.
I am prepared.
Anybody else have any comments?
Audience, audience.
That's a mistake, I mean.
Brad, I don't think Brad was going to comment on this.
He might, you don't know.
Yeah, ask Brad.
Brad, do you have any comments?
No. So Brad doesn't have any comments.
Okay.
You don't even know.
Then we can go ahead and make a motion, if you would.
Would you like me to make a motion?
It's more than you include, Brad.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. That we, I'm gonna take this off, that we issue a written finding to Richard J. and Janet E. Wise House of forty-nine Fels Pond Road, under section one seventy-four seventeen of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition, extension of a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling on property located in our three zoning district, map one sixteen, parcel nine, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. One, the board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding in a national laws forty-eight, section six. Two, certified plot plan, forty-nine Fels Pond Road, date eight twenty-five twenty twenty-one, scale one inch equals twenty feet, drawn by RBS, job number S seven nine five, DWG CPP, revised nine-two twenty twenty-one, lot coverage, proposed lot coverage fourteen point five percent, prepared by Rob Sykes, LPLS number three-five four one eight, registered land survey, date nine-two twenty twenty-one, Eastbound Land Surveying, Inc. Conditioned on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health. Said the applicant shall revise his plans, building plans, to reduce his bedroom count to three, as outlined in said Board of Health comment, which was read into the record, and obtain said approval from the Board of Health, and if that no, we don't even wanna be known, we don't even be notified, so. And so, at that, at that point in time, obtain approval from the Board of Health that in fact, your floor plan meets the Board of Health regulations of a three-bedroom residence.
Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See none?
I was gonna say, send the plans to us, but we don't want them.
Sorry, that got a little more confusing than it used to be.
Thank you very much.
That's where you wanted to get to. Ladies and gentlemen.
And I'm thinking of me, it's usually.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Good luck.
I don't see anything about the basement.
Tonight was one of, it's been different, hasn't it?
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to be. We talked about bedrooms, stuff, it was all, not relevant.
Sorry, we don't get out of the house very often. That's what it is.
I do. I do.
There you go, Doctor.
Doctor Howard, Doctor Byrne.
Okay.
The primary doctor. Is that?
I am with that.
I know. I know that.
But he's still a doctor.
Honoredly so, I went up. That just don't give me a knife, it's all.
Not tonight anyways.
You must have knew what you were doing with inflammation. Don't forget Sharon.
Who's got the green pen?
I do.
Usually have a red pen on.
What's wrong with that?
I'd say. I just didn't know.
It's probably legal. Who knows?
You're a lawyer.
Or not still lawyer.
I need to sign.
Okay.
One more.
Well, it's actually been good.
Sharon, could you read the first other business?
What about Sunset Circle?
Oh, I'm sorry, Seventy-five Sunset, sorry.
Seventy-five Sunset Circle, owners Louis and Maria Pine Hero, request a variance from the front and side setbacks under one seventy-four dash thirty-one of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a twenty-two foot and twenty-five foot attached garage out by, on property located in our five zoning district, map sixty-four, parcel eight, Mashpee, Mass. Attorney of rec- request, it continues until the hearing date of Wednesday, October twenty-seventh.
Correct, could you read that letter into the record?
I'm looking for it.
I have it.
I got it. It is dated October twelfth. Um, it's from Kevin Corrine. Dear Chairman Ferber, I represent the owners of the property referenced above, Seventy-five Sunset. The owners have filed an application for variance relief, but had neglected to file an ex- application for a specific finding as well. I have filed that application, it is scheduled to be heard on October twenty-seventh. Under that circumstance, I request that the variance hearing be postponed to October twenty-seventh, so both matters can be addressed simultaneously. Thank you for your attention, very truly yours, Kevin M. Corrine.
I take umbrage to the fact that it's made up to Jonathan and not Billy.
Therefore, we're not gonna rule on that, sorry. No, would you like to make a motion to continue?
I would love to make a motion, that we, I would like to make a motion that we accept, um, Kevin Corrine's letter uh, dated October twelfth, twenty twenty-one, in said letter, he asked for a continuation of a variance that he's applied for, uh, for Seventy-five Sunset Circle, said continuation. It will be heard, or is up until October twenty-seventh, which I presume we have availability.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Passionate. Okay, now on to first other business.
I'd like to make a motion, I move to approve the meeting minutes of September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next other business.
Is Brad gonna speak?
Mm-hmm. Brad, would you like to step up to the microphone? I don't know if everybody's familiar with Brad, Brad has been on the zoning board in the past, and he has, I believe, you, do you have that letter?
I have the letter.
Yep. Expressed interest in rejoining.
You missed us, didn't you?
Yeah.
You really got nothing going on, do you?
That means we're like two motorcycle riders.
Yeah, you guys can race each other down the road.
That's great.
So I, I believe the, the, the procedure here is, they send the request into the Board of Selectmen. They review it, and then forwarded it to us for a vote to accept or reject, and then they go back to the, based on our decision, go back to the Selectmen and they'll be sworn in.
Does she still read the letter?
Yeah, I think so.
I'll read the letter. Um, it's dated September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, Town of Mashpee Select Board. My name is Bradford H. Pittsley of Eleventh Florence Ave Mashpee, and I am requesting to be appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I have previously, previously served on this board and would like the opportunity to do it again. I feel that I have the ability to serve the town in that capacity again. My phone number is, and my email is, thank you for your consideration, respectfully submitted, Bradford H. Pittsley. I didn't wanna say you, in person.
Anybody have any questions of Brad?
I, I might have one, I mean, I, I was, my feelings were hurt when you left the sewer commission, but now that you're following me here, I'm.
I didn't know where this was going.
I didn't either.
Well, as one board member, I welcome Bradley back.
So.
I'd like to make a motion that we, we draft, we, we send a letter to the Selectmen, highly, highly recommending Brad's involvement with this board.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Brad.
Mine down.
Next up is Selectmen, and then you're back on the board.
Yep.
Do we need a bigger table?
We are. It's good though.
Possibly, because it's not very good.
Okay, last other business.
Um, Board to vote Robert Cagiano to become an associate member.
Bob, can you come up? You want to read Bob's letter into the record?
Yep, it's dated September tenth, two thousand twenty-one. It's to the Town of Mashpee. Hello, my name is Robert Cagiano. I purchased my first property in Mashpee approximately eight years ago at Ninety Shore Drive West, where my wife and I are full-time residents. I'm interested in joining the Zoning Board of Appeals. I would like to volunteer sometime to the town. I own and operate a flower wholesale company in Medford, Mass. We process and distribute flowers to major supermarkets in the New England area. I am available at any time to discuss the possibility of becoming, of being a board member of the board. Sincerely, Robert Cagiano, Forty-Nine Greensward Road, Mashpee, Mass. And he has his phone number, so.
I take it the Greensward, people will vouch for this gentleman?
Uh, he lives directly next door to our current chairman. And, uh, our, uh, pen houses down from myself, so. I don't know Bob personally, but I have met him, and I know John highly recommends him. And I think, I think he'd be a great addition to the board.
I had to, I do know him, he's a great guy, a hard worker, he'd be a good addition to the board.
And a very good golfer.
Well, we don't count that.
That's a bonus, I, I consider that a bonus.
Anybody have questions? Bob, do you have anything you wanna tell us?
No.
May I have a motion? You have it, I move that Bob be admitted as an associate number.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Next stop, Selectmen, and they'll sway you in.
Okay, thank you.
A couple of years ago, we were getting a little scarce on it, and now all of a sudden.
That's, that's good though, because.
Yeah, but now I can take that one.
People can miss meetings.
If I said I can't make it.
Exactly.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thank you. I just didn't say it.
Here, you're the secretary.
I'm the secretary.
I always like to see associate have ability and votes. Sure, sure. Absolutely, thank you, okay.
His email's on here, you know that, right?
Yes.
Sit down, we're not going anywhere.
Thanks, Bob, I wish I could switch my legs if it's okay.
We have additional business.
We have one more issue.
Issue?
Well, not an issue, just something to vote on.
Sharon, what else?
No.
The board needs to approve the completion of Habitat for Humanity project on Mendes Way.
Right.
And so they can release the, um, public.
I did not see anyone review that, though, I didn't see any letter from anyone from our community saying, we went out, looked at it, and everything is completed.
Has it been approved by the Buildings?
I went out there myself and did the final inspection, it's very, 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 um, good buildings, they're, you know, very, something to be proud of, actually.
Compliant with what they asked to do?
Yep, very good, yeah, it's, it's, it was, it's a nice thing that we're able to do something where you, um, you know, where you, it's an unbuiltable situation, and they turned it into two, two.
Do you think you need any assistance?
Beautiful houses, actually, you know, you know, they did, they, um, it's, to, to the building code, they were perfect.
They're awesome.
Do you think you need any assistance from a road standpoint, from somewhere? Because, or we're releasing the bond of the road, right? I don't, if you're in towns, it's an engineer that's.
Um, I think DBW has been out there, um, they've, they've approved, I think they've gotten all the approvals they've.
Listen, Habitat does an unbelievable job, and I'll do anything I can to help them, so I don't wanna say something wrong here, because without them, we'd be in a bad place.
I, I feel very comfortable that they've met all, everything.
Yeah, I would think David, if he had an issue.
They've, yeah, I've, I know they, they've jumped through all the hoops and that.
Let me ask you this then, question, Dave, just for clarity, so you've been out there, you've looked at, you've inspected it, you're, you're stating that they have met their commitments to the town as far as the improvements, and we should release the bond?
Yes.
Okay.
Sharon, could you read their letter into the record?
I have, I have a question, Mr. Chairman. No, they can vote on it. Could that be part of the official agenda that was submitted to the, uh?
It's under other business, additional.
It's under additional.
Additional topics, unexpected topics.
I would recommend that to the board.
Thank you very much, I'm, I'm okay with it.
All right, I have a letter from the Town of Mashpee dated October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Is this the right one? Oh, this one. All right, I have a letter from Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod. And it's dated October sixth. It's to the Mashpee voted, um, Zoning Board of Appeals, regarding the release of the security of four and eight Mendes Way, FKA thirty-three-hundred-and-forty-one Great Neck Road, okay, CP two thousand nineteen dash twenty-nine. Dear Board of Appeals, its Chair and Members, today, with the above referenced project built pursuant of the approved plans and certificates of occupancy issued, we respectfully request the Zoning Board of Appeals' action to release all remaining securities for the subject properties in the form of subdivision performance bond number one-zero-seven-zero-four-two-two-eight-one, having been issued to the Town of Mashpee by Travelers Casualty and Surety Company of America. On behalf of Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, I want to thank you for the guidance and partnership through the permitting process. We are very pleased with the result of this small development, and we look forward with hope of providing additional affordable ownership opportunities in the Town of Mashpee. I am available, should there be any questions concerning this matter. Sincerely yours, Beth Harding Wade, Director of Land Acquisition and Project Development.
Can I have a copy of the letter, please, if I have to make a motion to show them?
I have it here.
Okay.
Okay, I, based on the results of this vote, will sign a letter releasing that, uh, bond. Would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion, um, with the following fact, that our zoning enforcement officer has visited the Habitat for Humanity property, four and eight Mendes Way, and has inspected the property, and has found it to be complete, and in full compliance of the plans that have been submitted to this board. In light of that fact, I would like to make a motion that we reduce